I would like to call the Jefferson County Board of Commissioners in session. Mr. Frank, would you please call the roll?
I hope everyone will sign in and mark present on your computers, please.
Everyone's computers up and running? One problem. Anyone else? John Johnson. Yeah, Jimmy Dale called me. Mr. John Johnson, front corner. Are you good, John? Would everyone please rise for the prayer led by Mr. Joe Coleman and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Sammy Solomon? Next on the agenda, we have approval and corrections of the agenda. Do we have anything? Not hearing any, we'll move right along to, you have a regularly quarterly session minutes?
We do have a budget amendment that is listed on your agenda, but it was not presented to Budget Committee on Monday. It is Fund 101, number 24, and there are two items on that budget amendment. If the board would consider suspending the rules to...
I hear a motion to suspend the rule to add, Mr. Scarlett. Is that second? Got a second everywhere. Tim Seales. You have before you a motion that's being made and properly seconded to suspend the rules. Bear with us just a second. Passed eighteen to zero, so we will now add to the agenda under...
It is listed under Budget Committee already.
It is, it is listed under the Budget Committee.
But it was not presented to them Monday. It's 101, number 24.
101, number 24. Mr. Scarlett, you good with that?
Yes, yes, sir.
Alrighty. That will be added under Budget Committee. No, we're going to go ahead and do it now. I wanted to get the corrections to the agenda with. Okay, now, next we'll have the Grateful Nation, Mr. Doug Ibbetson.
First of all, we'd like to thank the County Commission for hosting our quarterly memorial this evening. The, it will be presided over by Craig Kinyarum, our first Colonel.
I'd just like to thank the county and the Hero Card Project for acknowledging those who've given the ultimate sacrifice for our nation. Tonight, we're going to honor Ronald H. Knight. Ron Knight hailed from Strawberry Plains, Tennessee, along the banks of the Holston River. He graduated from Fulton High School in Knoxville with a class of 1961. According to Jim McDade, a high school friend, Ronnie danced so funny, the rest nicknamed him Creature. He was a great friend. Knight graduated with a bachelor's degree from the University of Tennessee, later served a year in Turkey as a volunteer with the Peace Corps. Before joining the United States Air Force, he took a job with the Knoxville Housing Authority. His service in the Air Force included flying the T-37B aircraft at Moody Air Force Base Valdosta, Georgia, where he was trained in his pilot training. By 1968, First Lieutenant Knight was trained to fly the EC-47, a version of the DC-47 Sky Train, better known as the DC-3, that was retrofitted for this electronic reconnaissance mission in Vietnam. On December 13th, 1968, Knight left for a tour of duty in Vietnam, assigned to the 69th 94th Security Squadron, 7th Air Force. His squadron was based in Phuket Air Force Base in southern Vietnam's Ben Dinh Province, along the coast of the South China Sea. First Lieutenant Knight was awarded four air medals for successfully completing missions under hazardous conditions. He would later receive the Distinguished Flying Cross for heroism while participating in an aerial flight. Vietnam's summer monsoon season had not yet ended in early October of 1969. The pilots who flew routine missions out of Phuket were accustomed to dealing with high winds and heavy rain. On October the 8th, First Lieutenant Knight piloted Flight 434900 on his EC-47 with a callsign Prong 33 and a crew of six. They were to conduct an airborne radio direction finding mission, an RDF mission, to help determine the location and movement of enemy units. The mission was due to take off at 14:40 that afternoon. As the day wore on, the weather continued to deteriorate. Despite the harsh conditions, the plane left on schedule. However, the crew was forced to return when it became clear that the weather worsening and loss of all navigational radar, they wouldn't be allowed, they wouldn't be allowed to complete the mission, there's no way. The team returned to the base and was informed it would take an enormous amount of time to fix the problems. Undaunted, Ron and his crew took off again at 16:30, only to determine that due to both that weather and continuing technical problems, the mission could not be accomplished. The decision was made to return to Phuket. As the aircraft was making its final approach, the crew reported that they were dealing with electrical fire, complete electrical fire across the airframe, loss of aircraft's navigational instruments, and shortly after that transmission, all contact with the plane was lost. Aircraft vanished from the radar screen. Inclement conditions hampered the initial search and rescue effort for four days. The weather finally cleared and the wreckage of the plane was found, the entire crew had perished in the crash. First Lieutenant Ron H. Knight, aged 26, was lost along with his five crew members of Prong 33. Knight was laid to rest at the Jefferson Barracks National Cemetery in St. Louis, Missouri, and is honored on the Vietnam Memorial in Washington, DC. His name is inscribed on Panel 17W, Line 50. And just something to remember, if we acknowledge, like we're doing here, to remember our heroes, they'll never die. Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
So we were unable to locate some family members that could be here, so the commissioners from his district, Commissioner Blevins, Commissioner Douglas, if you'll come up, will present you the proclamation for this hometown hero. He lived in your district. As you're coming up, whereas Ronald Knight, a resident of Strawberry Plains, graduated Fulton High School, he joined the Air Force. Whereas, he attended the pilot training program at Moody Air Force Base in Georgia, by 1968 he was trained to fly the EC-47. He left for a tour of duty in Vietnam on December 13th, assigned to 699th Fourth Security Squadron, South Air Force, based on Phuket Air Base. He was awarded four air medals for successfully completing missions. Under hazardous conditions, he would later receive the Distinguished Flying Cross for heroism or extraordinary achievement. First Lieutenant Ronald H. Knight, aged 26, was lost along with five other crew members of the Prong 33, and he was laid to rest at Jefferson Barracks National Cemetery in St. Louis. First Lieutenant Ronald H. Knight lived a life in service to others and is worthy of special recognition and appreciation for dedicated service. Now therefore, upon the request of County Commissioners and those affiliated with the Wounded Warrior Project, by virtue of this authority, best me as Mayor of Jefferson County and in conjunction with you, the Commissioners, express our sincere thanks and deepest sympathy and condolences to the family and friends of the late First Lieutenant Ronald H. Knight. He will always be remembered for the sacrifice he made in Jefferson County and United States of America. Herein too, I've set my hands to seal this document. So Ronald H. Knight will be displayed in the foyer coming into the courtroom, and he will be there until the next quarterly meeting when we honor our next veteran.
Thank you, Mayor. Alright, we're ready for approval of the minutes. Eighteen yes, zero noes. Next, we have appearance of citizens. First up, please come to podium and state your name, Mr. David Seal. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. David Seal, 730 San Martin Road in Dandridge. Last fall, homeschool families in Jefferson County contacted me and reported certain sports were not available to their children in Jefferson County schools, even though our legislature made law in 2013 compelling public schools to provide homeschoolers the opportunity to participate in interscholastic sports. A loophole in state law allowed Jefferson County schools to exclude certain homeschool children from participation in certain sports, primarily middle school age homeschoolers. After consulting Mark Reeves, TWSAA Executive Director, and Emily Cornute, Tennessee Department of Education, I knew the so-called Sports Association loophole had to be closed. Multiple state legislators concurred on that. In October, working with Representative Fason's office, I drafted the legislative intent for a new bill to close the loophole. It was filed in January by Fason and Senator Nicely and signed into law by Governor Lee last Tuesday. To use a sports analogy, it was a slam dunk, 28 to zero in the Senate. It peered on their consent calendar. The new bipartisan act compels public schools in Tennessee to provide homeschool students with the opportunity to participate in public school sports regardless of the school's membership in a sports association. The loophole is now closed. I call this to your attention because Jefferson County Schools receives more than $78 million per year in appropriations, not counting grants and not counting building debt. It's not too much to ask that a handful of homeschoolers be included in our sports programs. I urge you to watch how our school system treats our homeschool athletes at the middle school level now that the new law is in effect. And I have supporting documents for all of this, if you'd like to see it. And finally, we have a second eminent domain bill that is in the House Finance Committee in the morning, and I have to leave right now to work on that. I hope to have a report for you all here in just a few days on that. Thank you all again.
Thanks, sir. Next, we have Tina Ball.
Tina Ball, 1260 West Highway 2570, Dandridge. You know, I'm here mainly because of the quarry. I know you got a lot here, but Jefferson County has grown so much. My husband and I were born and raised in Knoxville, and I see more growth in Dandridge and Jefferson County than I, in the areas where we live and where we visit frequently. And what I see is not good. I mean, we, we, we bring in the quarries. You know, that's going to be damaging to our children, our grandchildren, our great-grandchildren. It's going to be from now until the end of time, if we allow it to happen. You know, I, I love myself, I love the growth, but it needs to be responsible. It needs, when you guys go out and inspect these sites where people want to build homes, subdivisions, new roads, you need to look at the community in a whole, not just the site. I mean, look at the entire community. What is this going to do to the people in the community, the children who go to school in the community? I mean, it's, it, to me, this is, we're working backwards. You know, my husband drove past the quarry just recently, and the wind was blowing, and the dust was so bad. It wasn't our quarry, it wasn't the one Piedmont, but the dust was so bad, you could see it for miles. It looked like forest fire. We're only opening our eyes up to do the same thing. So I think you guys need to open your eyes, look, listen to the community. We were not informed when this was opened. We were told beginning, they're moving dirt, they're going to move the mountain. It'll take them three years to move the mountain. And then we were told, they're rock harvesting. What is rock harvesting, other than quarrying? I mean, am I wrong? Now I hear, you know, we go on and on and on, the, we're wanting to put agricultural and put in rock crushers. That, you know, you guys can't do this to us. You can't do it to the community, you can't do it to the county. I mean, look at what you're doing to the people in the, and like I said, this is your family, your friends. You someday, you may be sitting where we are, because you guys will not have this job forever. It will end. And then where will you be? You will be, you know, hoping that some people like us, they're going to stand up for you and help stop this, I mean, it's just, it's nonsense. But you know, I have lived Knoxville, I lived in Maynardville, I lived in Granger County, and of all of those places, I see Dandridge is the, more damaging. I mean, Granger County, everybody up there, you go through it, they wave at you. They know you. My six-year-old, when my daughter was six years old, we moved to Knoxville, she waved at everybody because she thought that's what she was supposed to do. Everybody was so friendly. But like I said, it, to me, this is, I mean, I stand up here, week after week, month after month, I come up here, I speak my voice.
Ma'am, your time's up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Doug Ibbetson.
I'm Doug Ibbetson. I'm speaking as a private citizen this evening, I am not speaking as a school board member. Nothing that I say tonight reflects the thought of me as a school board member or the school board. I'm speaking tonight because I think there is a shock that's gone through the county recently, that I'm sure you're all aware of with the increase in property assessments. I think there's a great deal of misunderstanding of what that meant. I think there's a great deal of fear over what it will mean in property taxes. I also know that there has been discussion of renewing the wheel tax that recently expired. I believe that to conflate both of those and talk about both of those in the same vein is just going to add more confusion to the community. What I would suggest, not that you've asked for my suggestion, but what I would suggest is that you deal first with the overriding question of how the increased assessments will affect future property taxes. Allay the community's fears about that, let them understand what it means, and at some point in the future, address the wheel tax. As I see it, there are actually three different scenarios that can take place. We can end up with two new taxes, the wheel tax and an increase in the property taxes, no new taxes, no, no renewal of the wheel tax, no increase in property taxes, or one or the other. I think that's kind of a confusing scenario for us in the community. So I would urge you to please deal with these one at a time at different meetings. Deal possi, and I think I would suggest dealing with the property tax issue first, and at some time in, in future, should you need to or want to, talk about the wheel tax. I don't think we should do it the other way around. The wheel tax is pretty cut and dry, the property tax is rather convoluted. Please take that first, do not talk about the wheel tax in the same meeting that you're talking about the property tax, and give us some satisfaction as to where we know we're going on that larger of the two taxes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have James E. Nolan.
James Nolan, 714 McGarvey Road, Newmarket, Tennessee. And I don't think we should be needing the tags for the wheel tax, because this county's got all kinds of money in the budget, and there's been approximately 350 new homes or more coming in, with probably 300 to 500 more coming, it sounds. And there's also a square footage, people are wanting to raise that by 10 more percent. And we had a property tax increase in '23, now property assessments will raise the property tax somewhat. Just don't see what the need for this increase in taxes all the time is for. You're taxing the person to death, is what you're doing. You have a new purchasing person, supposed to be saving like approximately such as $400,000 last time, you know, that's money that you're making too. And Jefferson County just needs to learn how to economize like the residents have to do in these hard times. And think about the taxpayer for a change. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Linda McSmith.
Linda McSmith, 3766 Islandview Road, Sevierville, Tennessee, 37876, District 8. I'm coming before you to talk about a few different things, some having to do with the county itself and some related to the budget. First of all, with zoning. We've had a lot of issues recently that have come up and process related to zoning, to definitions for zoning, to adding new designations within the zoning board itself right now. You need to think about making that happen sooner than later, what you're going to do about it and address it so it can change. Also, look at the different definitions and provide better guidelines for people that are putting in for it, so they know exactly what they're supposed to be doing. I think there's a lack of education, both of commission as well as the individuals coming before the different boards to ask for their changes. So just a lot of different education that could be better. I know I'm not going to harp on it, but please renew the fire stations at last year's numbers for the budget, they, what they've requested for this year, as far as that carrying over. There's a lot of different needs that they have, there's a lot of equipment, their expenses have gone up just like yours. If we do something different, they did not have a true increase from '22, '23 to '23, '24, because all that was given was that bonus. If you think about that, if you take that total bonus money away, you never gave them an increase last year or an increase this year. So think about how you're doing that and how they're supposed to survive. They're supposed to now be doing mutual aid, we're supposed to be covering the lake. How do we do that? We don't even have a boat. How are you supposed to do lake rescues? Think about it. You gotta give them the things that they need in order to make it happen. Third, I think the website is improving. It needs to be a little bit more logical for a lot of people to find things on there. You have to dig and dig and dig and dig to get to where you want to be, and it takes a lot of time. And if you're not diligent about it, you're not going to get there. Thank you for putting the information up about the taxes, the little icon that's on there to give you explanation. I think that was great. You guys took care of that in the last week, but think about what's going on and how that's being done. And not all our residents have access to that, but quite a few do. Thirdly, about meetings, encourage people to use their microphones from the commission, please. We can't hear you. We really can't. And there's a lot of things that go, what'd they say, what'd they say, and we miss it. Secondly, I made a suggestion previously, could we do where we did before, where somebody was on deck, so we have ability to get up here quicker? We're not wasting time for people walking around the room to come up for citizens' appearance. So have somebody called, somebody on deck. Consider a second podium so they don't have to walk all the way across the room. Think about some things that could expedite things. Thank you.
Next, we have Marion Knight.
Marion Knight, 440 West Main Street in Dandridge. I'm here to ask you to approve two resolutions and vote against one. As I said at the last meeting, please support Resolution 2024-11, establishing a new sensible C3 zone. It creates an acceptable path, path for small business owners, rather than forcing them into the I-1 industrial zone. Second, please also support Resolution 2023-62, that moves BESS from the A1 agricultural zone to the I-2 industrial environmental district. Not only is it a more appropriate zone for BESS, but is also an extra insurance policy to protect us in case the TBA decides to build a new substation. And finally, please vote against Resolution 2023-49. It started as a way to protect neighborhoods that were facing proposed RV parks. Then it was used to add the unpopular rock crushing business as yet another inappropriate use on agricultural land. That was just plain wrong. Commissioner Huffaker deserved better treatment than that. She tried to pull her support of the resolution once she realized it was being used as a path to bring more objectionable uses to A1. Please support her by voting against the resolution. Hope you haven't changed your mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Beth Nelson.
Good evening, Beth Nelson, Strawberry Plains. I'm here again about zoning. You have before you several resolutions, as Marion said, adding value-added processing and rock crushing. Value-added processing includes a lot of things, including slaughterhouses. A resolution which was, the original intent was to deal with RV parks. A resolution which was the original intent was to deal with RV parks. When are you going to deal with it? When are you going to deal with it, is my question? And so instead of having a resolution that might could have had some promise to deal with RV parks, it went to regional planning and value-added processing and rock-crushing was added to it. Not good. I ask you to oppose this resolution due to the fact that it would go before the BZA and you, this body, would have no control. The C-three resolution, I'm asking for you to vote for this. Many of us in the community are tired of industrial zonings being placed where infrastructure is not in place and residents of the county can potentially be harmed. We continue to put industrial where it should not be. Also, the BESS facility, please vote to secure the fact that these facilities will be placed in I-two, as stated before during public hearings and numerous times at county commission meetings. These facilities have no place anywhere near schools, homes, or residences, and the infrastructure should also be in place for those facilities. And I ask for you to please, please consider this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have David Nelson.
I'm David Nelson. I live at four seventy Judson Road in Strawberry Plains. There are three zoning resolutions on the agenda tonight for which I would like to share a few thoughts. The first of those resolutions is 2023-62. This will permit BESS facilities only in I-two zones. Thanks to Mr. Dockery's initiative on this, I'm in complete agreement with this resolution. I think I-two is the right zoning district for BESS facilities. They are environmentally unsafe and they simply do not belong in any other zoning district. The second resolution is 2024-11. It creates a new C-three commercial zoning district. I am very much in favor of this resolution. It is geared towards small businesses that will not create possible adverse consequences to surrounding property owners. This zone will be helpful and useful in several ways. One, it will provide an option for small businesses other than the I-one zone. It will provide a business activity zone that is more compatible with agriculture and residential neighbors than most uses presently allowed in I-one. It can provide buffer zoning, which we sorely need, between residential and industrial zones, protecting homeowners from adverse consequences from the many existing industrial uses that presently are allowed in I-one. It can encourage small business growth, which seems to be a universally felt need in our county. The third resolution I want to address is 2023-49. It will require special use permits for certain business activities. I am opposed to this resolution for several reasons. However, I will only address my primary opposition tonight. It is this. This resolution will transfer more power and authority to the Board of Zoning Appeals, taking it away from this county commission. I think such a transfer is bad policy. The Board of Zoning Appeals has the power to take actions that greatly impact this county. Their decisions are final without any opportunity for this commission to participate in those decisions. Those decisions are made by the affirmative vote of three members only who are appointed, not elected officials. As a taxpaying resident of this county, I would much prefer that this body, this commission, have final authority on significant zoning decisions with eleven affirmative votes, not three, cast by elected, not appointed commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Monty Moore. All right. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Next, we have Annette Loy.
Annette Loy, twelve fifty-eight Beaver Creek Road, Strawberry Plains, Tennessee, three seven eight seven one. We have a problem here in Jefferson County. Our county planners and zoning commissioners are not serving the needs of the citizens. That is a big problem. It's a huge problem. It's a problem that affects every one of us every day. There's a solution for this. These people, these seven individuals who serve on this zoning board, are appointed by our mayor. Then you, as a commission, approve those appointments. These people are not elected. They are appointed. So there is a solution for this. It is within your power to do that. Now, I have come to ask you to pay careful attention to several items that are on your agenda. Several of these have already been discussed at length, and I will not take your time nor the time of the citizens by going over those again, except to say that I'm with the people who have already spoken. If they're for it, I'm for it. If they were against it, I'm against it. That's enough to say about all those resolutions. Now, I want to urge you, to encourage you, to plead with you, to pay special attention to the real issues in this county. The real issues. Do not allow yourselves to be distracted by efforts of those who have other agendas. I'm very serious when I say this. Case in point, and I have discussed this with several county people and historians. Eminent domain is not a clear and present danger in our county. It never has been. Zoning and planning is a very clear and imminent danger, the lack of. The last time that property was taken in Jefferson County by condemnation against a property owner's will was in 1948. That was the only time that I have been able to find in the history, way back as far as we can go, that it has been actually used against a citizen. That property was the site of the present Mari Middle School. It was taken by the town of Dandridge through the Circuit Court and handed over to the school system. That is the only time that eminent domain has been used in the last 75 years in this county. Do not allow yourselves to be distracted by other issues and by other agendas. Pay attention. The future is now. The problem is zoning and planning. Thank you for letting me speak. And I would like to personally thank each and every one of you for your service. It is not easy what you do.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have Steve McSmith.
Steve McSmith, three seven six six Island View Road, District Eight. And I echo Ms. Loy's words. Thank you, each and every one of you, for your service. It's not an easy job. I recognize that every day, every day. I would just like to briefly give some extra support to what my wife already said. We were both here for last week's work session. We were here at the Budget Committee prior to. We were here for the continuance of the Budget Committee afterwards, up till 10:00 PM. We stayed late because we were specifically interested in the nonprofits and our fire department. They got there. By golly, they got there. And as a result, I suspect, there he is, right there, standard banner, last week's edition, Steve Marion's article, our inveterate staff writer. The committee agreed to recommend fire department funding at the same level as last year, including a 30% increase included last year as a, in quotes, "one-time bonus." The committee also recommended the following contributions, et cetera, et cetera. There was a lot of discussion about that. And I know that we're not voting on that. You're not voting on that tonight. But I simply am earnestly requesting that you don't let that slip away, that you respect and acknowledge what your Budget Committee agreed upon and is recommending to you to ultimately vote upon. And I'm earnestly asking you to eventually, when we're there, vote approval to what your Budget Committee recommended, including that effectively 30% increase. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Mr. Robert Bruner.
Robert Bruner, six hundred Bruner Road, Strawberry Plains, Tennessee. I'm here to first address the tax issue, wheel tax, and the property assessment. I will give a short, brief view of my point on that is that if we do simple math as citizens of the county, that we can see which best suits us as individuals. For myself, I've done the math for the assessment and it's been thrown out that we're looking at about eight, maybe nine percent or nine cents on the hundred dollars increase if we don't do the wheel tax. For me personally, that was about a hundred and fifty-seven dollars. And for me with two vehicles at my house, that's basically an increase of about $60. So simple math got me the information where I needed to go. So I want to tell each and every person of the county, do the math for yourself and see where it's at. It's not common core math. It's simple, basic math that we learned as students in Jefferson County schools. And also, it's been provided on the internet what the county budget is, where we're spending our money at. I say educate yourself as a citizen so you can make the best choice. And follow up with that is nobody wants any new taxes. But as a businessperson and a homeowner of the community, it's been spoken, probably 10 years ago, we had about $90 million in interest debt. Now then, we're down in the upper 30s. So that's been a physical responsibility of the commission to get that under control. So I want to thank you for being physically responsible as a commission. That you've done a great job. And I want you to weigh out the options so we can continue to get that paid down. My second issue here tonight is the C-three zoning. As everybody kind of knows, I was in a zoning issue not long ago and that I wanted to give my input on that. And my input on that is what's drawn up here tonight that you're going to be voting on really is not a good document for our county. And I'll give my reason for that. I'm all for getting more zones in the county. Don't get me wrong, I'm not being, wanting to have new zoning and tighten up what we have. But one of the things that I want to address in this is talking about heavy manufacturing, heavy assembly, compound packaging, bottling, processing, and other industrial uses. Who determines what other industrial uses are and will be? So that needs to be more clarified. Sorry about that. Real quick, propane tanks. We heat with our shop with propane and we're going to do that going forward. So that's another issue that we need to address, finalize. Right here, whenever I was in front of county commission, is Paris, Tennessee zoning. And I would recommend each one of you to go to their website. It's 203 pages. You don't have to reinvent the wheel. Go take what we need out of this for our county and make it work for us. It's very informative for each and every community member. It's Paris, Tennessee. Go look it up and look at their stuff. It's very informative. That will help us as citizens and a commission. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Dale Metz.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner and Commissioners. I'm Dale Metz. I live at three sixty-three Battlefield Drive in Dandridge. And of course, my issues are rock quarry in Piedmont, and I'm just going to give a little bit of review. Over the last several months, I think the nuisance that that rock quarry caused to everybody in the area is very well documented. Also well documented is the negative impact it's had on the lives of people in that area. During the several months that I've been talking about, we've had a definition of a rock quarry from the state of Tennessee presented. I think everyone should agree that that operation down there is a rock quarry and it does not belong in an A-one zone. It seems to me that this resolution that would add a rock crusher down there is an effort after the fact to change the zoning to a situation that already exists. And that would just really be wrong. We don't need to do anything that would enhance or expand that operation. The cities of Jefferson City, Dandridge, and White Pine have all rejected this resolution. You know, and it's commissioners, y'all should do the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Pam Metz.
It's been a while since I've seen everybody. We had the big storm. Here we are back again and nothing's changed. My name is Pam Metz. I live in Piedmont. My address is 1122 West Dumplin Valley Road, Dandridge. This rock quarry can be seen, heard, and felt four miles. Yet we have been told by our county zoning office that this rock quarry was rock farming, that it was rock harvesting, that rock removal is the same as dirt removal. None of these things are true. This rock quarry is what it is, a federally licensed mine. It is not in compliance with our county zoning or our county ordinances. Please oppose the resolution to add a rock crusher to the quarry. Show the citizens of this county that some decisions by our county government are made with integrity. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Next, we have Mike Asbury.
My name's Mike Asbury. I live at one one two two West Dumplin Valley Road. Finally said my name and address first. So in case y'all are worried about or haven't seen this, this is about 50 acres out here is where the rock quarry is. Now, if you think this is similar to rock, somebody hauling, selling field dirt and whatnot, more power to you. Or if we say, as we say in the South, especially hard. So this, I mean, y'all paid-
Sir, fix your microphone, please.
Yeah. Got that, didn't I? So, am I talking too loud?
No.
Right, right. So, louder? Okay. So, you know, this commission paid a lot of money to have a survey done and one of the things that came out of that survey was that the citizens of Jefferson County wanted to keep the rural field. Well, we lost our rural field. It's gone. So, and the zoning compliance officer says that what we're doing here is okay in A-one because it's similar to the taking of dirt. But he does not, will not allow them to crush because crushing will take you from being, whatever this is, to a rock quarry. And you'd have to do that in I-one. Well, if you allow- Well, if you allow, if, and that resolution passes, if you allow rock crushing in A-one, which this is zoned A-one right now, what have you done? You essentially said, we're going to let you mine in A-one. And that's what I'm here to try to reiterate and get you all to vote against this because this would be the same thing as mining in A-one, would it not? If you had a rock crusher. So, what I'm saying is, if you do this and you make a, put a rock crusher in A-one, and you're allowed to come in here and do all this in A-one, you're going to open this county up to a bunch of this, maybe, maybe not. But what if, you know, you've got some big factions in severe county like Vulcan and Blaylock, what if they decide, they get tired of going through the Buc-Ee's traffic and decide to come over here and open up a rock quarry in A-one? What are you going to do to stop them? So, that's, I said, I'm just going to say, please don't allow quarrying in A-one or rock crushing in A-one. We want to keep our rural field, and that's all I got to say about that.
Thank you, sir. Last but not least, we have Mr. Chris Mace. Done being covered. Thank you, sir. We would like to notice the Jefferson County High School Youth Leadership. Are you in the house tonight? Stand up. Be seen. Thank you all for coming. Next, moving right along on the agenda, we're at proclamations and courtesy resolutions. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Get the microphone adjusted here. So, we have several, and unfortunately, these are members of our community who have passed away, and we honor them. We have several tonight, and it's worthwhile to make note of. The first one is Eddie Woods, and some of his family is here, and I'd like for the commissioners from his district to come forward. That'd be Mr. Snodgrass, Mr. Brooks. I don't think Mr. Lowe's here. This is such a request of them, of course, we're going to do it anyway, so.
So, yeah, come on up.
So, I have a resolution, and the commissioners will present it to the family. Whereas Clyde Edward Eddie Woods passed away suddenly in Moorestown, Tennessee on Friday, January the twenty-sixth. Eddie Woods attended White Pine School twelve years before graduating in nineteen sixty-five. Eddie enlisted in the U.S. Army in sixty-eight, where he would serve as personnel specialist until his discharge in nineteen seventy-one. Eddie Woods was elected mayor of the town of White Pine in nineteen seventy-seven. Following his tenure as mayor, he would stay heavily involved in Jefferson County and Town of White Pine boards and committees. Eddie Woods was appointed to the Jefferson County Emergency Medical Service Board, Jefferson County Industrial Development Board, and worked tirelessly serving Jefferson County and the town of White Pine. Eddie Woods loved people. He enjoyed seeing and meeting friends and could continue a conversation for hours on any subject, sometimes with just himself. Eddie Woods was admired, respected, and loved by family and friends. He loved God and was worthy of special recognition and appreciation for dedicated service to others. Now, therefore, I mark potash request of county commission by virtue of authority vested as mayor of Jefferson County and in conjunction with Jefferson County commissions. We express our sincere thanks, deepest sympathy, and condolences to the family of the late Eddie Woods. He will always be remembered and loved as a true volunteer. His smiling face and happy personality in Jefferson County and the town of White Pine will never be forgotten. Hereinto, I place my hand to this seal, so. Thank you. Thank you. Next is Michael Romans, also in the White Pine District. Any of Mr. Rom- yeah, here we go. Come on up. Michael Mike Romans, a resident of White Pine, Tennessee, passed away Thursday, February the fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Mike Romans, a former employee of Shady Grove Utility District and Coleman Enterprises, was employed by the Town of White Pine Water Department. Mike Romans was the epitome of the true volunteer spirit. He was a lifetime member and former captain of the Jefferson County Rescue Squad, where he was a loyal and diligent servant for thirty-five years. Mike Romans was instrumental in starting the rescue diving program in Jefferson County, where he was a master diver. Mike Romans was a lifetime member of Dandridge Fire Department with ten years of service, former chief of the Bainberry Fire Department, and a lifetime member of the White Pine Fire Department with thirty-nine years, where he mentored several of the current firefighters and officers. He was an EMT with the Jefferson County Emergency Medical Service since nineteen ninety-two. Mike Romans lived a life of servitude to Jefferson County and its citizens. He was admired, respected, and loved by family and many friends. He was worthy of special recognition for dedicated service to other. And I by the authority vested as mayor of Jefferson County in conjunction with county commission, we express our sincere thanks, deepest sympathy, and condolences to the family of the late Mike Romans. He will always be remembered and loved. Next, we have Johnny Carmichael, and last, Mr. Spoon, Mr. Walker. Got my own AJ there.
Mr. Solomon. Sammy. Did you sum the duties of the chair?
He's just good for saying the pledge, Jimmy. He can't sum the chair. Come on up this way. This is the chair of county commission's father, so here's proclamation. John Johnny William Carmichael, Talbot, Tennessee, passed away on February the twenty-seventh. Johnny Carmichael founded the Carmichael excavation business, serving the Talbot community, Jefferson County, and many surrounding counties. Johnny Carmichael, volunteer firefighter, founded the Kansas Talbot Volunteer Fire Department. Johnny Carmichael, man who loved God and a helper to anyone in need, was an active member of the Talbot Cumberland Presbyterian Church. Johnny Carmichael, an elected constable for sixteen years, served Talbot, the ninth district of Jefferson County. Mr. Carmichael, the epitome of volunteer spirit and loved helping others. Johnny Carmichael was admired, respected, and loved by family. He is worthy of recognition and appreciation of dedicated service. It is with this, we express our sincere thanks, our deepest sympathy and condolences to the family of the late Johnny Carmichael. He will always be remembered and loved as a true volunteer. Next, District Eight Commissioners, Mr. Dockery, Mr. Coleman. We'll be honoring Sheriff David Davenport and his family. It's driven, I think, from Nashville. Keep on, be here. Well, I was half-rocked, so. Thank you, thank you for driving up. Appreciate it. David Davenport, Dandridge, Tennessee, passed away on Friday, March the twenty-second. David Davenport, after graduating from Young High School in Knoxville, joined the United States Air Force, serving four years during the Vietnam conflict. After proudly serving his country, he began his lifelong career in law enforcement by joining Tennessee Highway Patrol. David Davenport served as a state trooper for seven years and was then appointed as a special investigator with the TBI. He was recognized as the nineteen ninety-seven Special Agent of the Year. David Davenport, after his retirement from the TBI, continued to stay involved in law enforcement and was elected sheriff by the residents of Jefferson County. David Davenport served faithfully and honorably as sheriff of Jefferson County for three terms, and then continued to stay connected to law enforcement by assisting in television documentaries on several well-known cases. David Davenport, loved, admired, and respected, will be missed by family and friends. He is worthy of special recognition and appreciation for his years of dedicated service. Along with county commissioners, we offer our sincere thanks, deepest sympathy, and condolences to the family and friends of the late David Davenport. Thank you so much for his service. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the proclamations for the seat.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll move right along. Next on the agenda is approval of notaries and bonds. We have two additions. Hang on just a second here.
Without objection, like to add the names of Carrie Grooms and Jamie Nerry.
Eighteen yes, zero no's. Next, we have election committees, boards, and commissions. Audit Committee, Gary Jett, Chair. I believe that has been transferred to the Finance. Move right along, nominating committee, Mr. Heidi Thomas, Chair.
The following nominees come from the nominating committee. To the Animal Control Oversight Board, Ron Coleman, for a term of three years. To the County Board of Equalization, Bob Hardy, Charles Briggs, Charles Crosby, Ellie Smith, for a term, for terms of two years. And to the Industrial Development Board, Dewayne Sykes, for a term of one year.
Thank you. Question or comment? Proceed to vote. Seventeen yes and one no, passes. Next, is that all you have, Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we've got Long Range Planning Committee, Mr. Jim Snodgrass. No report tonight? Thanks, sir. Moving back to Mr. Mayor and your appointments, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of commission. Have one mayoral appointment for the EMS board. That'd be Colin McRae. He'll fill out the unexpired term of Eddie Woods. The confirmation of county commission.
Eighteen zero, passes.
Next, it's Housekeeping Mayor's Resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh one. It's updated TOSHA plan. Every, I think, five years, we have to update this for the state. So, very identical to the previous TOSHA plan.
Come on, Mr. Joe. Thanks, sir. Eighteen zero, pass.
Next, last but not least, Resolution twenty twenty-four dash ten. It's a community development block grant administrative services with community development partner. We advertise for that. This is the agency that applied, accepted, and they will be administered in our CDBG grant. But it does take county commission action.
Eighteen zero. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Next, moving along to other elected officials. Does any of the elected officials need to speak tonight? Highway Department? Guess not. We'll be moving along to Director of Reports. Department of Education, Mr. Tommy Arnold. Do you have anything for us tonight, sir? Thank you, sir. David Gout, do you have anything? Thanks, sir. So, we are down to the Finance Department, Ms. Jessica Ellers.
Okay, so last week, we presented the February financials. If anyone has any questions after reviewing those, I'll be happy to answer those.
Question or comment?
Okay, moving on. The surplus property policy was presented to Budget Committee last Monday evening, and they have recommended it to go before Finance Committee. So, it will go before Finance Committee before coming back to you all, is my understanding. So, you may see it in the next, near future. The next item is the twenty-two twenty-three audit annual financial report. Does anyone have any questions? Okay. The last item is the infrastructure MOA with WIT utility.
That is for a vote, right?
That is for a vote, yes, sir.
Sure. Eighteen zero. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is that all you have?
For this part.
Next, we have the fun part. Budget Committee, Mr. Scarlett.
Yes, sir. First off, it's still number one of them, nineteen. It is, if you remember, we moved back to this to have twenty-five thousand for professional engineer on making front vision, some of them just there.
Does this involve fund balance?
Yes, it does.
All right. Set for vote. Ready to vote? Mr. Scarlett speaking to your microphone. Seventeen yes, one no, passes.
General Fund one oh one, Amendment twenty-one. Two eighteen. Well, there were seventeen of them voted through, and then one was voted separately on this, so we'll take one through seventeen. We'll take, number eight is stricken.
You said number eight is stricken?
Number eight was stricken from this. Or sixteen. Oh, I'm sorry.
And it was, it did not pass, so we updated the amendment.
Okay. I've not got a new sheet.
It's one through seventeen.
One through seventeen. Number eight is, call it, it is on the county bill, and there was thirty-two thousand two hundred and twelve dollars not included in the budget. Mr. Snodgrass spoke to that at the budget meeting. If anybody'd like to ask him questions about it. Other than that, so moving, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Don't hear any votes.
General Fund one oh one, Amendment twenty-one. So move it, Mr. Chairman. This is, this is reserve balance, ADA transfers in and out, where we have money coming out of our reserve that we funded a few years ago.
Eighteen yes, three no, sir.
General Fund one oh one, Amendment twenty-two. One item. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Don't hear any votes.
Yes.
Eighteen zero, sir.
General Fund one oh one, Amendment twenty-four. Library reserves, QSCAB interest transfers out. So move it, Mr. Chairman. I guess I did. One oh one twenty-four right now. So move it, Mr. Chairman. 101, 24, right now. So move it, Mr. Chairman. Or you want to go back to, okay, you got 24. Well, if it did not appear, if that's correct, if it did not appear, so move it, Mr. Chairman. Requires a second on this.
Do we get a second?
Let's go back and start over.
Mr. Scarlett, what was that to vote on?
This is a Public Jefferson City Library Reserves, twenty-five hundred dollars. Budgeting funds to recover book and instructional supplies. And then allocating school qualified construction bonds refunds not budgeted for the year of thirty-eight hundred dollars.
Interest that we received on this fund that we were not budgeted for.
Eighteen zero, passes.
All right, 101, item twenty, twenty-three. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Not hearing any. Proceed to vote.
Budget Committee approved it last week. It's the three hundred and ninety-six dollars and forty-four cents that Mr. Seal is requesting in addition to the three thousand that was originally vested in for his lobbying.
Fifteen yes, ten no, one say.
Sanitation Fund 116, Amendment four. Budget payback for tax, tax anticipation note. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Not hearing any. Proceed to vote.
Tennessee Opioid Abatement Fund, 121, Amendment four. Hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars. Received, interest and funds received from opioid abatement, February twenty-sixth, February 2024. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Proceed to vote.
Drug Enforcement Fund, 121, Amendment one. Drug enforcement fines and forfeitures, fifteen thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment?
122. 122, Drug Enforcement Fund, Amendment number one. Okay. Fifteen thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Sixteen yes, zero no, two abstains. Pass.
Highway Fund 131, Amendment two. Recovery, budgeting funds from Tennessee Risk Management, recovery on insurance. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Not hearing any. Proceed to vote.
Debt Service Fund, 151, Amendment two. Debt reserves, one hundred, one million, one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. This is the principal payment that we're paying ahead on the freshman academy note. If y'all remember, we take, we took the money that was in the variable rate note once we paid it off, and we committed it to pay over the next sixteen years. It also is, this is the other side of the five hundred thousand payback of tax anticipation note. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Not hearing any. Proceed to vote.
Capital Fund, 171, Amendment three. Items one through five, most of them are disability projects. One is committed for capital from Jefferson County. Budgeting funds from reserve expenditure lines complete the Jefferson County office building project. Another hundred and fifty thousand that was reserved. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Not hearing any. Proceed to vote.
Nursing Home Capital Fund, 174. One item, eighty-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-two and change. Funds remaining from nursing home for construction of White Pine Homes. Reimbursement in county on debt payment. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Proceed to vote.
Other Capital Project Funds, 189, Amendment two. Budgets and additional funds reimbursed county for CDBG grants. Forty-two hundred, eighty-seven dollars and change. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Not hearing any. Proceed to vote. Pass, eighteen zero.
Landfill Fund, 207. Amendment three. This is Jefferson County Insurance Recovery, Jefferson County Motor Vehicle. We had a truck burn. This is the insurance money and the additional funds out of that. Also, the sanitation board has decided to allow the director to buy a brand-new pickup. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Not hearing any. Proceed to vote. Seventeen yes, one no, passes.
All right, that is all the county. This is school budget amendments, 141. General Purpose Amendment, thirteen. Revenues and donations, special education for Medicaid reimbursements for physical therapy, vision services, and other special education needs. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Not hearing any. Proceed to vote. Pass.
Budget, 141 Fund, Budget Amendment fourteen. TESA Outcomes Funding, Reserving, six hundred sixty thousand, six hundred and eighteen. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Proceed to vote.
Fund 141, General Purpose Budget Amendment, fifteen, one through eight. Valuation and Testing, Student Protection Insurance Recovery, Increase in Workers' Compensation, Health Services for Special Olympics, Education Prep Program for Welding Materials. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Proceed to vote. Pass.
Budget Amendment 141, Budget Amendment number sixteen. Items one and two, summer reading program, or summer instructional program, and summer camp transportation. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Proceed to vote.
141, Budget Amendment seventeen. Other contracted services, fund balance for upkeep and services for all elementary and K- eight school playgrounds. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Proceed to vote. Pass.
141, Budget Amendment number eighteen. Items one through ten. Education Technology Resource Center, Maintenance of Operation Plant, Coordinated School Health, Nursing, Special Education, Summer Camp Transportation, Career and Technical Education, Special Education. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Proceed to vote. Pass.
141, Budget Amendment nineteen. Payments for risk management for repairs to two buses. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Not hearing any. Proceed to vote.
Fund 141, Budget Amendment number twenty. School Board is asked to access undiscussed fund balance to replace HVA system at Restrong School. Three million, seven hundred and eighty-two dollar, seven hundred and eighty-two, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Not hearing any. Proceed to vote. Seventeen yes, one abstention.
Jefferson County Schools, 142, Federal Funds, Budget Amendment number seven. Staff Development, Changing Format, Fiscal Pre-Monitoring, Unused Grant Funds. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Not hearing any. Proceed to vote.
Fund 142, Federal Funds, Budget Amendment number eight. Math Implementation Grant. Amendment, other amendment cover bus drivers' benefits through the end of March, and Carl Perkins Grant. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Proceed to vote. Pass.
Fund 142, Federal Funds, Budget Amendment number nine. Title III, Tennessee All Corporate Grant, SIR 3.0 Grant. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Proceed to vote.
Fund 143, Student Nutrition, Budget Amendment number three. USDA Grant, Lying Dairy Foods, Fruits and Vegetables, Meat and Legumes. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Proceed to vote. Pass.
177, Educational Capital Funds. Moving funds to expenditure line, prepare to issue purchase order on project, on paving. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Not hearing any. Proceed to vote. Mr. Chairman, does that conclude your business? Debt Policy 4.3 Debt Management Annual Review.
Need to do it. We need a general fund. Yeah, we need to do the debt policy, please. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Not hearing any. Proceed to vote. Pass. Jefferson County Redemption Letter, 2010 Bond.
We need that one. Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. That is Obligation Bond Series 2010 Recovery Zone Bonds, which is, allows us to pay the million-plus dollars in on it early. So move it, Mr. Chairman.
Question or comment? Not hearing any. Proceed to vote. Does that conclude?
I think that concludes. Anything else, Ms. Jessie? All right. Thank you.
Next, we have Libraries Board of Portages, handout. Anybody know anything about it?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Library Board makes nominations for each respective entities. It's approved by county commission. It's like Danridge, White Pine, Jefferson. And this is, they're allowed to serve three terms. They simply permit it, present it to us. It doesn't go through the nominating board because it's just a confirmation mechanic.
Do you have a list? Do you have the list?
No, I didn't know.
Okay, let me read it real quick, sorry. Kendall Wright, Jefferson County Representative, first term, July 2024, July 2027. Ralph Tucker, Jefferson County, first term, same, July 2024, July 2027. Jennifer Winkler, White Pine, July, July 24, 27. K.E. Rutherford, Danridge, first term, July 2024, July 2027.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pass, eighteen zero. I think old business we've had that took care of. So we move right into new business, Consent Agenda.
This was a rule change we discussed at work session to allow us to develop a consent agenda to minimize the votes you all take, if you so choose.
Is there a question or comment? Mr. Scarlett?
What will be on the consent agenda? Will it be standing or will it be made up separately each time?
It would be, I mean, it would be advertised but made up separately each time, depending on, I mean, parliamentary things like notaries and bonds, anything you all want on there. Just a mass approval of non-controversial items. And then anything that's on there that you all want removed at the meeting, the role will allow you to remove it.
Mr. Brooks?
Mr. Harnden, at what point would we have the option to remove something from the consent agenda? Would that be under approval and corrections of the agenda?
Anytime before it's voted out yet.
Anytime before we get to the consent agenda? So if the consent agenda comes up before we vote on it, any one commissioner could remove something?
Sure, and it's automatically placed on the Hill Day Agenda.
Okay, and that you don't, that doesn't need a vote or anything? It's just one commissioner? Okay, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Not hearing any. We'll proceed to vote. Passes eighteen zero. Next, we have the county commission calendar. Mr. Scarlett.
Uh, based on conversation with finance department, the calendar for next year, we're looking at would be issues for them to get payroll out. Uh, we would need to back that up. How many days, Miss Jesse?
I was gonna ask if we could change it from June twenty-third to Thursday, June twenty-sixth.
Okay, we're talking about changing from June the twenty-third to June the twenty-sixth.
Special call. If we change it to June thirtieth and we do not have forum at that point, none of our year-end budget amendments will get passed.
Sure.
It'd be an emergency. So if we were able to meet that Thursday, that would allow time, we run about fifteen payrolls before that meeting.
Okay, question or comment? Therefore, is that a motion, Mr. Scarlett? Who's made a motion?
To move the, to move it from twenty-third to now to the twenty-sixth.
June twenty-third to June twenty-sixth.
Okay, the mayor's just informed me that we got conflict in January at my work session.
It's on Mark Letzkin, they need to move it to the Tuesday after January fourth. In our Rosewood, it's not moving this calendar that you have here.
We just need to go ahead and move it. Anything else? Do we want to vote on the corrections or vote on it already corrected?
Do we need to vote on the corrections first?
Sure. Yes. Of course, I know we did.
Randy said he said.
Hold up just a second. We'll vote to a man first.
We can do both things, yes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
We do that to include one of the automatics, one of the things.
So, original motion, you'll be voting on the amendment.
I vote yes.
I appreciate you, Mr. Joe, but you're a little quick on us. You're voting on the amendment.
We didn't read it yet. I was, we were breaking it down.
Amendment is to move it.
From a twenty-third.
We're moving two days.
To the twenty-sixth and then also to the Tuesday in January.
Passes eighteen zero. Now we'll back to the original motion, Mr. Dockery's motion, and I believe it's taken to Mark three, I believe. Seventeen yes, one no. Passes. Next on the agenda, we have Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero seven, increasing school adequate facilities tax. Mr. Mayor, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Just for those who may not have been here at the special meeting, we were always, several people have always been under the impression we were maxed out on our adequate facilities tax. You were maxed out on your first, when you first enacted that, one dollar was the limit, and that's where we've been since. I'll go with you, you're older than me. So, uh. Anyway, the legislature's looking at new legislation on adequate facilities tax, especially in some of the faster growing counties, and they want to add in a clause that you have to grow twenty percent in ten years. That's a lot of growth, or nine percent for. Legislature that I've talked to, they said, does not affect Jefferson County. Verbally say that, but what I see written doesn't match what I've verbally been told. So I don't know, I'm gonna try to hold them to it, but you are allowed every four years to increase your adequate facility tax ten percent, which would take you to a dollar and a dime. The cautionary tale is, if legislature changes and we're not exempt from it, you have to do two-thirds vote and two consecutive meetings to do this. That puts us into July. You can't call a special call, it has to be a regular scheduled meeting, so. I don't know what the outcome will be, if you go forward.
Sure. Okay, is there a question or comment?
If we vote on it tonight, it takes effect tomorrow.
No, takes two consecutive meetings, two-thirds vote.
A July meeting will be the soonest it can take effect if it passes tonight.
Man, we'll argue that we already had it in play before the legislature changed it, but they say it doesn't affect us, so I.
That was my argument.
Good luck.
So not hearing any questions or comments, we will proceed to vote. On adding a dime. Sixteen yes, two no's. Passes. Next on the agenda, we have Resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixteen, will tax resolution. Mr. Scarlett.
Yes, sir. I, as it is to be put back on, uh, several people out of New Market District, down there in District Seven, are worried about the property tax. And I think with what Mr. Frank had told me the other day, uh, there are more, there'll be about as many above us as there is below us. The highest is Pickett County. Is that correct? It's a hundred dollars. Lake County, I'm sorry. Uh, what this amounts to, as I've said, and based on, since we don't know the certified rate, uh, this is nine cents on the property tax. This part of revenue, uh, this budget this time, because of the reappraisal, we have to start out at revenue neutral. Uh, so if, if it's revenue neutral, that means we don't get any money to go forward. So that's why I moved this to, uh, to put this on, and it, and it boils down to either you have thirty thousand of your friends help you pay the bill, or you have fifty-nine thousand of your friends pay the bill. Because there's thirty-seven thousand uh, property owners, parcels, however you want to put it, and there's close to sixty thousand vehicles. So move it, Ms. Chairman.
Question or comment? What is your dollar amount, Mr. Scarlett?
Uh, thirty dollars. Thirty dollars and five of it I'd like to dedicate to the road department for paving. The more people we have move in here, the more impact we have on the roads. I talked to Mr. Charlie. He's confirmed that over and over that they have that, and they could move, use it for paving, use it to hire, do whatever, but five dollars to the road out of the thirty, and then twenty-five dollars would be for debt service, capital improvement, or capital purchases. It does not allow this to go into operational funds, and we should never let this go into operational funds.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Brooks.
Uh, Mr. Scarlett, actually, just to answer my question, the money would be going, twenty-five of the thirty would go to the debt service fund.
Well, it would not, that would be a decision that this commission would make on a per-year basis. If they don't want any of it to go into debt service, if they've got a capital project, they could choose to do that.
As it's written right now, what is, is proposed to go into the debt service fund?
As it's written right now, it is for debt service, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Jesse, debt service, capital purchases, or capital projects, with the exception of the five dollars. And it is a yearly decision for the commission on what they put that for.
But as it's written right now, the money goes into the debt service fund.
I'm gonna repeat this again, Austin. As it's written, it is a yearly decision, meaning decide every year. This commission will have to vote. With the exception of the five dollars that goes to the road, every year this commission will have to vote, whether it goes for the debt service, whether it goes for capital projects, or capital improvement. And that is a every year vote, as it is written right now.
Do you agree, Mr. Brooks? Terry Dockery.
I'd just like to point out that it's been noted during this discussion and assistant inputs, the amount of money we're talking about, it equals nine cents on the property tax rate, but it cannot help this year's budget. Uh, the budget for the upcoming FY twenty-four, twenty-five has to be approved in June for our new fiscal year starting July first. If this is approved tonight, it'll have to get another vote at a regular scheduled meeting in July. So it will not stave off, help stave off property tax increase if we can't create a balanced budget. I'm finished, Chairman.
Thanks, sir. Next, we have Jenny Norton, and then we have Mr. Marcus Reed for amendment, I believe.
Mr. Dockery kind of made part of my point right there that I wanted to share, was that, um, it won't be for this year, and we could do this at a later time. Um, just because they, it looks like you're gonna get, your property was appraised, and it looks like your taxes are gonna go up, and that gave everybody a heart attack, but we should have had a letter in there with Ms. Gass. We should have gone together, and we've discussed this, and next time you have a reappraisal, there'll be a letter in there as our attentions that stop this heart attack that everybody had when they opened their taxes and saw that they went up. Just because your property was appraised for more does not mean that your taxes go up on your properties. There's an equalization clause in there that causes it to balance out. They can't charge you more than they did. And I don't think we need the will tax right now. Um, it's not going to make a difference. We can get it later. So that's just my thought, and I'm, I'm gonna vote no on it. We already have one, and this is, instead of twenty-five dollars more, it's thirty dollars more.
Mr. Reed.
Can I say a couple things before I take my motion? There's a couple of things about, there are several things about this will tax that have been going through the media, have been spoken publicly. Uh, one is identified as a fair tax for property owners. I don't think that's true. My point is, uh, we all, I'm sure, have received phone calls all over the reassessment. Everyone's concerned about the reassessment. I actually had a friend of mine call me and said, Marcus, I'm worried. Uh, I'm trying to figure out what kind of amount of percentage that I'm gonna have to come up with to make sure that all my rental property, uh, the tax increase is gonna be paid by the people that rent there. So there's been a thing said that people that rent do not pay for their children's education. I respectfully differ with that because they're picking up that fee in the rent they pay, and if you're paying eight hundred ninety-four dollars a month for a one-bedroom apartment, and you're barely making ends meet, and then you tack on an additional thirty-dollar will tax, that's not right. The second thing is, as Mr. Iverson said, we need to take a step back and make sure that we look at our budget and we see what we have to work with, and we move through what we have to fund and what we may have to come up with concerning a new tax or not a new tax. I think we're just jumping the gun, as Commissioner Norton said. So I make a amendment to the motion. I request, or I amend this motion, that we postpone this till the October meeting, and that way the citizens have input, and maybe we can have a respectable and reasonable discussion about a will tax, and we can get citizens' input. And by the way, citizens, if you are against this and you want to come up with a petition, you can actually petition with a number, ten percent of the last governor election, and you could put this on a ballot. I believe in citizen speaking. I believe in their input. So my motion is that we postpone this will tax to the October meeting. That way us commissioners can become better informed. We can hear from you, because I can say I have not talked to anyone in my district concerned about not having it or having it. And the third point is, we have enough money in our debt fund balance to pay our bills and still add to the debt fund balance as of this time. I'll leave with my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor to amend. It's our second to the motion. And who is it? We got second, Mr. Johnston-Brooks. Okay, we have John Neil Scarlett, speed, and then two more.
I would urge drastically that we do not postpone this. It will take, as Mr. Terry said, it will be July, if we were to pass it now, before we get to vote on it again. If we pass it in July, it would be, I talked to Mr. Frank, he said it would take approximately till October. Is that correct, Mr. Frank? To get it put back in. The further we kick this can down the road, the worse off we get. The Budget Committee at our meeting last week added two point four cents to your tax rate. Last week. It's coming, the tax, and based on the stuff in the, the other thing is, what I want to say is, absolutely, we cannot touch the money in debt service for operational funds. The state will absolutely climb us with a microscope. The only way you have debt service, the money comes for it, is it comes to an incurred debt that is not operational money in any form or fashion.
Hold up, hold up here.
How many's been out here to some of these, like, I don't know, going out out to twenty-five, seventy out there, up in some of these subdivisions where the houses are real close together, and some of them down over the hill, they're little two-bedroom, bedroom houses, and you've got four or five vehicles in the, in the park. You know, it's the first tax that we can put on the people. I've got two vehicles. I wouldn't care to pay another hundred dollars for each vehicle to keep from raising my property tax. Now, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I had four calls yesterday. Three of those calls were dead. Three of those calls were dead set, but they did not want their property tax raised. And I made that vow when I run for county commission. I was asked that by the moderator, would I raise tax on Jefferson County citizens? I said, only one reason that I would raise tax. It would have to be detrimental to the safety of the people, first responders, road use, something that we definitely need. And I don't care. I, I just feel like it's the first tax that we can put on the people and I will not vote to raise property tax on anybody.
Thank you, sir. Okay, now, Jim Scarlett, I've got two more up here that didn't hit a button that raised her name, so.
All right, I'll wait then.
Go ahead, Jim.
Um, John Neil, just so far, we've added two-point-four cents, right? And we s-
Three, three-twenty-seven, eight-hundred and change.
And we've got more to go, right?
Got more to, you just, we really just started the budget. We've added two-point-four cents right now based on where we were.
All right, just taking a look forward. We've got a request for fourteen additional people to add to the-
I think that's, yeah, somewhere right in that neighborhood.
Another six, seven-hundred thousand roughly? Which is how many cents roughly, roughly?
Five.
All right, so already we're in the hole with that number?
Yes.
Almost eight cents.
And you've got, uh, utilities, insurance, uh, fuel. There's, there's about another seven-hundred thousand of amulets in the sheriff's vehicles.
So I, I'm gonna urge also not to postpone at this point and remind everyone, I'm just, it takes two meetings to pass this, correct?
Two regular meetings.
Two regular meetings, so.
You can't call a special meeting for this.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not advocating in the end that I would support, but we need to get more facts from next year's budget requirements. I would encourage to move this through the first phase and we still have another phase to collect our data, collect our hearings, as, as Marcus said, and make our final decision.
All right.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Coleman, I believe Mr. Solomon had something to say?
No. No, I'm not.
Mr. Coleman, then.
This is just for comment. Every person in this county has more taxes to pay than what they can actually afford. I've had numerous calls just in reference to this new wheel tax. But to me, if we as a commission would do a little better, uh, handing out money, I don't think our citizens would be in the shape they're in. I think it starts with us. The reckless spending that's went on for years in this county and continues to do it. At some point in time, something has to give. So I don't see why we can't start now. We're trying to do something. We don't even know what we're doing because we don't know what we need. We're paying the bills and we have the money to pay the bills. We're always putting the cart before the horse. And it's about time the county within its means instead of what it wants to be. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Next, we got Janet Norton. Katie Hattler-Parker and Terry Dockery somehow getting switched around.
Um, I just wanted to bring up too, you know, we've, um, I've heard a lot of people, I'm a Realtor, for those of you who don't know that, don't throw anything at me. Um, but I, I hear a lot of people saying, there's so many people moving in here and they're just clogging our place up and we're not gonna be ruling anymore, there's just so many people. And look at all these D.R. Horton homes. For every single one of those D.R. Horton homes, there was that adequate facilities tax charged to them for every square footage of that house. If it was twelve-hundred-and-forty square feet, they had to pay a dollar for every square foot. So one-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty dollars went into our county. Now we just voted to increase it by ten cents. So these new people moving in here are now gonna take part of the brunt for that, paying that additional ten cents every time they build a house. Or these builders like D.R. Horton, if they take, some, sometimes the developer pays it before they sell the house. So some of the onus is going back on them. So we have other monies coming in and I'm, I wholeheartedly believe the wheel tax sticker is, is better than a property tax, absolutely. It is more fair, but not when you don't need it. That's just my point. When we need it, we, we bring it in here. If we don't need it, we're not a bank, we're not supposed to be hoarding your money. So that's just how I feel about that.
Next, Ms. Katie?
Okay, I'd like to say I support the wheel tax because it diversifies the tax base, which we hear over and over again about, and it takes some of the burden off the property taxpayers. And I want to address our spending. When I first got on commission, we were almost a hundred million dollars in debt. Now we're about thirty-eight million, is that right? In debt, just over the last few years. And I wanna thank the county department heads because the finance department, the department heads, the commission, the mayor, worked hard to reduce that spending. And I, in my opinion, the department heads are cut. I don't think they have any extra padding for the most part for their departments. And so we've reduced spending, we've paid off our debt, we've been fiscally responsible. And I just wanna thank the department heads right now for doing that and to say that I've had multiple calls, multiple people in our district have contacted me and they would, would rather have the wheel tax. So I'm gonna support the wheel tax.
Thank you. Next, we have Terry Dockery.
The, the wheel tax that recently expired, excuse me, the expiration dat, date was set to occur at a point at which we would have our principal paid down enough to where one wheel tax could make our, our debt payments. So we're there. And as been stated before, we can, we can make our debt payments on the one wheel tax. Uh, we've heard that budget committee started out two-point-four pennies in the hole. We heard about new positions. But again, I reiterate, this wheel tax has nothing to do with that budget because the budget has to be passed, assuming there is no wheel tax. And this wheel tax, it says, of course, the five dollars, the highway department, debt service, capital improvements, and capital projects. So to me, it's really all about vote for this if you want to spend more money, or the county spend more money. So I'm not gonna vote for the wheel tax. And respectfully, Commissioner Reed, I'll probably vote against your amendment to postpone and just go ahead and vote on the thing tonight. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Blavatsky, would you want to speak?
No.
All right, we will proceed to vote on the amendment. Mr. Reed's amendment to postpone? Let's see here, we got six guesses, twelve no's, no's have it. We will vote on the full motion tonight? Sure.
As I said, this, the, the wheel tax is not a, it's not solving everything. We're not gonna solve it with one fell swoop. I agree with Mr. Ronnie, we've got to watch our spending. That's what got us in problem to start with a few years ago when we like two and a half million dollars paying our bond payment. We didn't have a revenue problem, we had a spending addiction. But if, as you continue, you can only provide so much, there's a revenue coming in. So as you continue to add service and you continue to add other things, then we've gotta have more revenue. So there's only two choices, more revenue, cut spending. I'm all for it if we can cut spending. But if we don't cut spending, we've got to have more revenue. And the wheel tax with having it in there will allow us, because the debt service, or what they call, the old folks called the sinking fund, that debt service is made up of multiple revenue sources. One of the revenue sources in it is property tax. It's made up of ad valorem tax, it's made up of different things. There is, if you have the wheel tax put back in there, there is the possibility you can move some of that property tax to buffer future tax increases. But if you continue to add expenses, you have to have more revenue. It's just the way it is. So I urge you to vote for this wheel tax.
Mr. Reed's got a comment and we're gonna vote.
As of right now, our county debt principle is thirty-eight million, six-hundred-and-eleven-thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-six. Is that pretty close?
Sounds close.
Uh, county debt interest added to that is twenty-two million, seven-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand-and-fifty cents. Uh, the net debt, county debt liability, not including the nursing home in landfill, is fifty-four million, five-hundred-and-twelve thousand and some. The debt service fund balance of January twenty-twenty-four is fourteen million, four-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-one. The net county debt liability after subtracting the debt service fund balance is forty million, twenty-seven thousand, whatever. You know, we're well on the way of paying off our debt, but what if we have to build a new building and it comes in between thirty and mid, thirty, twenty and thirty million dollars in this day and age? So where are we gonna get that money to build that up? This is the reason why we gotta be very careful. We're in good shape financially, we got the money to pay our bills, we can move forward. We don't know what the budget is gonna end up like and we can't take anything out of this to do operational funding. So I would encourage you to really think about it because, uh, we're pretty close to putting a, a burden on the people sitting out here in the audience. And I don't care what you say, but in my opinion, there's no such thing as a fair tax. I'm sorry. The wheel tax is not fair, the property tax is not fair, but we're gonna have to have money to function. And we spend a lot of money in different departments and one of them is providing an education to our schools. And I tell you that a person who rents a house, rents an apartment, are paying just as much taxes as you are or that I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. We will proceed to vote. Question or comment before we vote? I think we're all in, all good.
Hey, get over on the right one, man.
You have eleven yes, seven no. It takes fourteen to pass. No movement. Moving on to next, on the agenda, Resolution twenty-two-four dash eleven, UC three zoning, Commissioner Austin Brooks. Mr. Brooks?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this zone is to aid small businesses. Everyone should have a copy of it in their packet. Uh, and Mr. Drennan can speak to the process if anyone's unclear, but all we're doing tonight is sending it on to the Regional Planning Commission and the city planning commissions for, uh, for them to look it over and then it would come back. We are not-
The following due process.
Yeah, this is not a final approval. Yeah.
Not to send it on.
Not to send it on, you don't.
You don't even have to vote on it.
I've got a resolution, I'm, made a motion, got a second.
You can, I'm just saying to send it to the planning commission, you don't have to have a vote.
Well, that's what I'm gonna do.
Mr. Scarlett, please speak into the microphone, sir.
I said if-
Anyone else before we vote? Are you done, Mr. Brooks?
Yes, sir.
Sure. I'll see a question or comment. Ms. Katie, get it seen on the floor.
Well, I hit it, it didn't work.
Okay. I'm a co-sponsor on this and Austin, I'm gonna apologize to you because I'm gonna ask to postpone this till our next meeting to make some of the changes that Mr. Bruner requested in there. Okay, you wanna do it, you wanna do it in planning commission? Okay.
You're, you're technically not passing anything. You're just passing a resolution saying, send it on.
All right, I pull my postpone request.
Anyone else before we proceed to vote? You have fifteen yes, two no's. It passes, send it on to planning commission. Moving right along, we have Resolution twenty-two-four zero four, rezoning C two to A one, Bramble Lane. Oh, it already goes, okay. I'm sorry, I have jumped the gun, I gotta back up. We have Resolution twenty-two-three dash forty-nine, special uses and special use permits.
Remove mine off that, Tim.
Hold up. Sir?
I said remove my motion off if you're changing the resolution.
Katie Hattler-Parker?
Okay, this is the resolution that I sponsored, um, with intent of giving citizens a bigger voice for campgrounds. And then resolution was modified. When it was modified, um, in my opinion, it downgraded and put ag processing facilities and rock crushing from I one to A one, which was not the intent. And when that happened, that gave the Board of Zoning Appeals full authority and it took away the rezoning, um, process, which took away our authority and in my opinion, gave the citizens less opportunity to voice concerns and to keep incompatible entities from being beside each other. So I wanted to say thank you to the citizens for speaking, who spoke in support of voting no on this. And I'm asking for all of your support in voting no, so if you could please press the red button, I would greatly appreciate it.
Anyone else, question or comment? Are you moving it to the floor?
If I don't move it, if there's no first or second, does it die? And it dies for good? Okay, well, I'll let it die.
Essentially, that's what I'm asking. Are you, there's two ways to do it.
Okay, I'll just-
You can vote no and you move the floor, vote no, are you, if there's no motion or no second?
It dies instantly.
Have a motion second from the planning.
From our commission.
From your, from this commission to move it, even though the planning commission recommendation is not like a budget committee or a nominee.
Okay, I'm not gonna motion it. And I appreciate other people not motioning it.
Is there a motion or a second? I think it says you died for a lack.
Thank you.
Think how easy that was? Okay, now we're down to Resolution twenty-two-four dash zero four, C two to A one, Bramble Lane. Mr. Scarlett, did you make a motion there?
I made a motion, it came through the planning commission, yes, sir. Moved approved.
Question or comment before we proceed to vote? Not hearing any, we will proceed to vote soon as we get to. Seventeen yes, one extension, passes. Next, Resolution twenty-two-four dash zero six, rezoning A one to C two, Lowery Luke Road. Question or comment? Not hearing any, we'll proceed to vote. Oh, we gotta have a motion. Oh, we gotta have a motion. Yep, I thought we had a motion. Is there a motion? Seventeen zero, one abstain. Next, we have Resolution twenty twenty-three dash six two, best uses only in I two zone. Question or comment? Not hearing any, we'll proceed to vote. Seventeen yes, one abstain. It passes. Next, we have surplus resolutions. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero two, juvenile court surplus disposed. Uh, Mr. Parham and Terry, can we take all three of these together?
Yes, sir.
Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero eight, finance department surplus and dispose. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve, sheriff's department surplus and sale. They all presented you all three together.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
We don't need to take the sheriff's department one in it, okay?
Do what in?
The sheriff's department on one needs to be pulled from that. Do it separately.
Do it separately? All right. We will take number three, Resolution twenty twenty-four twelve. From that, you will vote on the first two. Seventeen zero, one abstain. Now, we will vote on Resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve, sheriff's department surplus and sale. Question or comment? Not hearing any? We'll proceed to vote. Passes, sixteen zero two abstain. There is no announcements. We are fixing to adjourn, but remember, we have to reconvene for beer board. Mr. Blevins.
I want to take a second, Mr. Chairman, to, uh, remind everybody, this is the week of telecommunication, uh, telecommun, our E nine one one people, dispatch. It's the week that we honor them. Thank you all for what you do. We couldn't do anything without you. You're literally the wheels under all the departments and the very first first responders. So thank them for what they do. If you get a chance to go by nine one one, tell Justin what a great job they're doing. That's all.
Terry Dockery.
Uh, just wanna say real quick, we won't be meeting again until July, but the annual Chestnut Hill Charity Horse Show is a two night show. It's the last weekend in June and it's a fundraiser for the fire department. If you enjoy horse shows, please come on out. Thank you.
Thank everyone for coming out. Try and leave quietly and we're gonna proceed straight into beer board. Motion to adjourn?